Good evening, and welcome to the September 26th meeting of the Lake Forest Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board is here tonight to work together with all of you, property owners, neighbors, and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The City of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the Board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire Board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners, and the larger community. Our first order of business is to introduce two new Board members to the zoning board, Jay Kennedy and Lloyd Culbertson. And now I'd like each Board member to introduce themselves, starting with Jay.
Jay Kennedy, from Lake Forest, and I'm a developer, mostly in Deerfield area, so I do have quite a bit of insight into these types of issues.
Richard Kristoff, Fourth Ward. I am an attorney specializing in real estate litigation, Lake Forest resident for some time.
Sam Cirelli, Ward Three. Stuart Dixon, Ward Two.
Bob Frankson, First Ward.
Lloyd Culbertson, I live in the Fourth Ward.
And Rosemary Kerr, Second Ward. First order of business is approval of the minutes of the May 23, 2011 regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the May 23 meeting minutes.
Second.
The minutes are adopted. Next item on the agenda will be 299 Rose Terrace, a request for approval of a variance from the front yard zoning setback requirements to allow construction of a replacement front porch at 299 Rose Terrace. And before beginning that, I will ask if there are any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts on the part of the Board members.
No.
Next, I would like to swear in the parties who intend to testify tonight for both 299 Rose Terrace and those who are here for 737 Woodlawn Avenue as well, if you're here. Who intends to speak tonight?
Mark Downey for 299 Rose Terrace.
Okay.
Steve Mast and Jeff Heaney for 737 Woodlawn.
Okay. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge?
I do.
Then please present 299 Rose Terrace.
Good evening. I'm Mark Downey, President of Downey Rocks Forest Architects here in Lake Forest. Tonight we're requesting a variance from the front yard setback to allow the construction of a replacement front porch at 299 Rose Terrace. The image on the screen was the existing front elevation. Can you back that up? As on in your packet, the existing residence is nonconforming along both the north and west sides. Our hardship is conforming to the current setback requirement which resulted from a change of the underlying zoning district and a subsequent more restrictive setback We are proposing to remove the existing shed roof porch element on the north elevation and replace it with a new, more traditionally detailed portico. The new structure is within the footprint of the existing stoop and roof element, and as a result, we are not increasing the encroachment. This is the proposed within this section, which is exactly where the existing stoop and cover roof were. The new portico railing is approximately nine inches taller than the highest point of the existing shed roof. This is our new portico and railing, which just slightly extends above the highest point of the existing shed roof. We are proposing to replace the existing concrete stoop as it has begun to settle. In addition, we are widening the front stoops to be on the center line of the portico and the front door, but the stoops, the additional width of that, are not counted in the encroachment as they're allowed to encroach within the setback. We'd also like to note that the home with the proposed portico meets the city's FAR lot coverage and height ordinances. In addition, we have received five letters of support from adjacent neighbors.
Kathy, are you prepared to address the issues?
Yes, thank you. I don't have too much more to add on this. This is a pretty straightforward petition. This is a situation where the existing house was built in compliance with the code requirements that were in effect at that time. In 1959, there was a change to the city's zoning code which created a nonconforming situation on this property. The owner of the property is proposing, as was noted, to modify the front porch by removing it and replacing it. It will not extend into the front yard setback any further than the existing porch does. The required front yard setback is 40 feet. The porch will extend 33 feet for an encroachment of seven feet. The porch will get a few inches taller, I believe nine inches taller, so that's a little bit more of an encroachment. But reconstructing the porch at the same setback helps to preserve the streetscape and is very consistent with the overall neighborhood. This is a type of variance that the Board has approved in the past. I would note that the first sentence in the staff report refers to a side yard setback. The rest of the report refers to a front yard setback, and that was our error. There are findings in the staff report in support of this variance, and I would be happy to answer any further questions, but staff does find that this meets the criteria and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there any public testimony regarding this issue and the request for a variance? Then now is the opportunity for Board members to make any questions they have. Jay, let's begin with you.
You said that everybody was in support, the neighbors weren't, so there wasn't any issue from any of the neighbors about making this change or whatever.
Correct. There were a number of contacts from neighbors, but they all were in support of this project. We didn't hear any objection.
And this is really not doing anything beyond what's already there, in essence?
Correct.
You know, you're not encroaching to a greater extent or whatever, it seems like.
Correct.
So, okay. No, that's all I have. I don't have any comments, so I'm comfortable with the recommendation.
I have no questions. No questions?
No, it looks good to me. There's three letters in the back of support from, I assume, the surrounding neighbors, so no comments or questions.
Any other comments from staff, or should...
Nothing.
Do I have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move to recommend approval to the City Council of the requested variance to allow replacement front porch at 299 Rose Terrace. To allow the replacement of the front porch to be set back no closer than 33 feet from the north front property line.
I second that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a request for approval of a variance from the front yard zoning setback requirements to allow construction of a new replacement structure at 737 Woodlawn Avenue.
No, I'm Jeff Heaney.
Okay.
I was just getting that squared away. Steve's in the audience, my name is Jeff Heaney, I'm the architect for the proposed project.
Thank you.
We have been approved by previous Board to tear this home down, which at whenever it was built, in the early 20s, did not conform to the front or side yards, and the existing garage did not conform. We were faced with what would be an appropriate setback that would be in keeping with the neighborhood, and I think in your packet you have a kind of a streetscape of the setbacks of the homes on that side of the street. After talking, working back and forth with Megan O'Neil, we felt that the setback of 21 feet to the face of the bay window was appropriate. If you notice, on this plan, it shows how far the enclosed existing front porch encroached into the yard. It was like 14 and a half feet away from the front property line. Also, of course, in redesigning the house, we now conform to all the side yard requirements. The new garage will conform, we conform to FAR, we conform to the height requirements. So we're only seeking zoning variation for the front yard to kind of maintain the streetscape of the neighborhood. That's all I have.
Kathy, would you please present your staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Kerr. This is a property that has been a problem for the neighborhood and a problem for the city. It has been vacant for a number of years. The city, it did go through some type of ownership change. The city was trying to work with the real estate company that had control of the property. We did list this property as a distressed property. There were some break-ins to the property earlier, so I think the neighbors and from the city's standpoint were pleased and relieved that this property was recently purchased by Mr. Mast. He did come forward initially, and we talked about a project that would go forward to the Building Review Board to do some alterations to the existing structure. However, as we looked at the existing structure and the limitations that that posed, it would require a number of variances because the existing house is encroaching on the side yard setback, the west side yard setback, as well as in the front yard. We really encouraged the property owner, the new property owner, to consider in this case a demolition and to really start over and build a house that really would add to this neighborhood. We don't often do that, but this was a case that demolition really seemed to be appropriate. So the property owner pursued that direction, and as we worked with him, we also really encouraged him to pull the footprint of the house out of the west side setback. So all that is before you tonight is a request for a variance from the front yard setback. As you look at the streetscape of this along Woodlawn, virtually every home encroaches into the front yard setback. Again, that is because of a change in zoning regulations since this area was developed in the 1910, 1920, 1930 era. The new house was considered by the Building Review Board on September 7. The demolition was approved, the new house was approved. The Building Review Board did ask that we share their recommendation with the zoning Board that a front yard setback be approved, really to avoid a gap in that streetscape. The existing house is about 14 feet setback from the front property line. This property, this new house would be about 21 feet, so it will be set back further than the existing house, providing a little more room, but really keeping that, the streetscape line intact. Again, the Building Review Board did unanimously recommend approval of this. Staff does support this request for a variance. We think it will be a significant improvement on the street. In your packet, I believe there was one letter from the neighboring property owner across the street stating no objection to the proposed redevelopment of the lot, but asking that we look at creating some kind of a turnaround at the end of Woodlawn, at the east end of Woodlawn. The space at the end of Woodlawn is really extremely limited. A number of years ago, probably about 16, 17 years ago, when the Gardner Brown subdivision just to the east was considered, there was discussion at that time by the Plan Commission on whether the street should connect through at that time. And because of the really distinct differences in the neighborhood, it was decided at that time that there should not be a street connection. With that decision by the Plan Commission and City Council, that really foreclosed the option of making either a street connection through or allowing enough room for some kind of a cul-de-sac or a T hammerhead at the end. So unless a significant amount of this front yard and the neighboring front yard were to be taken for the purpose of a turnaround, that isn't possible. The city doesn't have the ability to step in and initiate that kind of a taking in the street, although it's not ideal. It isn't unlike other streets in our smaller neighborhoods. Fire Department certainly is aware of the condition on this street and other streets like it, and they have the ability to pull in and then back out as necessary. So that was the one issue that came up, but it isn't something as part of this variance that can be addressed, and there really isn't significant land to address that at this point. With that, there are findings in the staff report in support of this requested variance, and staff recommendation is that you recommend approval of the variance to the City Council
At this time, I'd like to ask each Board member if they have any questions of the petitioner, and Jay will start at this end with you, please.
No, no specific questions. No specific questions on this issue.
I think it's a great design. You've done a nice job. No questions.
Maybe just one. What's the timing for construction?
As soon as we're approved.
Thank you. Kathy, how long does the, does this, does our action here, does it survive in perpetuity or is there a time limit?
I know the Building Review Board action is approved for two years, but variances, your recommendation will go to the City Council, and an ordinance will be approved granting the variance. So yes, the variance is granted, but the variance is granted to this project and to this property owner.
So it pertains to this project only?
Correct.
Thank you, Madam.
This may be out of the scope, but, you know, this to me makes a lot of sense, but because of the current setback guidelines and stuff, it seems to me that if somebody down the road would want to, you know, do a tear down in here, they could theoretically put it back at 40 feet, which is the current, you know, which wouldn't make sense to me based on where everything is. Is there an ability to, aside from this, to go in and maybe change that 40-foot setback to something more logical based on what all the houses are, you know, for future tear downs?
Can I interrupt? Even, I've served on a couple zoning boards, and I'm on the Code Commission in Glenview. We've changed our zoning ordinance, I wasn't on the zoning ordinance in Glenview, but I was in Richmond, Illinois, that we've changed it to the average of the homes on the street.
Right, that's what I was getting at, and I don't know what would be involved in doing that here, but this particular situation makes a lot of sense, keep it along the current line, but if somebody else decided to tear something down and push it back 40 feet, it would look pretty funny, and technically they could do that. So I don't know if there's something that that could be looked at, but...
The City Council can direct any portion of the code to be reconsidered and amended, so that is something the City Council can do. Any demolition that would occur on this street would come before the Building Review Board, and the Building Review Board does look at sighting of the house as well as design. So normally, though, those kinds of streetscape consistency issues have been dealt...
That might get picked up.
In that way.
Yeah, okay. But, no, but this particular thing seems totally logical to me, so...
I just had a question for staff and one correction. Is this 737 Woodlawn? Because one of the diagrams included shows it as 797, so just pointing that out. And then, question for staff. On page one, you refer to the fact that the existing house has been identified by the city as a distressed property. Is that an actual classification, and if so, how do you arrive at that?
Yes, the code has a classification of distressed property, and I can't recite the exact definition, but it has to do with properties that may be unsecured, may violate one or more of our nuisance criteria, for instance, if there's excessive weeds or grass over eight inches. If the property has been vacant and unattended to, not just vacant, because we do know that for periods of time, people may be at another location for the winter, for instance. So there are a number of criteria that we use to identify distressed properties. Once we do identify those, we send out one courtesy notice. We then send out a notice of violation, and depending on exactly what the violation is, the city may contract out to have the violation addressed and charge back the property, or we may issue a citation and bring the property to the administrative hearings official. And this is a process that really has been put in place over the last two to three years because in the past we really didn't have situations where we're seeing these kind of properties. So there is a pretty refined process that is now in place to better deal with these properties.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to take public testimony. Seeing no public testimony, are there any other questions from Board members to the Then do we have a motion regarding this here?
Do you circle back for comments before we go to the final vote, or is it questions or comments?
Questions or comments.
One comment.
Sure.
I live around the corner from this house, and this street, this is an idyllic little neighborhood street where kids ride their bikes and play street hockey and, you know, do all things that good neighborhoods do. This house at the end of the street is a distressed eyesore. It's a problem, it's abandoned, and this is a real cleanup opportunity, I think. None of the houses on this street have a 40-foot setback. In fact, this one's going to be pulled back from 14 to 21 feet, so I just wanted to state that it's kind of a no-brainer in this case, and I'd support it, so...
The only thing I noticed about, I think it's a great idea, the only thing I noticed is when I went to view the property, I had a very difficult time getting out of that street because there was a pickup truck that was parked in front of the driveway to this property, and you literally, you could not turn around, you had to back up all the way down the street. So I understand the neighbor's concern even though that's not before us today.
But I will tell you this, when you've got a dead-end street like that and you're concerned with children, nobody's going to be speeding down that street unless they plan on planting themselves in that...
That fence.
Yeah, that fence. So, you know, I see it as an asset personally. There's too many side streets in every village that people kind of ignore the 20 or 25 mile an hour speed limit. They're forced to stop.
And Dick, I hear you saying the end of that street is, you know, it's, what do you do?
Occasional inconvenience for a driver, oh well.
You know, it's just not...
As opposed to a child's life.
...cul-de-sac, so...
Or even a T, I mean, knowing that because you're back, you might up against the other road.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
Yeah, I agree with your comments, it's just that if there was an emergency vehicle or a fire vehicle, I could see that being a... If there were cars parked on that street like there was yesterday when I viewed the property, especially the size of that truck, it would be difficult for a fire truck to get through there.
Emergency guys always find a way, though.
Right. I move to approve the variance, the front yard variance, as submitted on page one of the staff report for 737 Woodlawn Avenue for new construction. Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion is passed.
Thank you. Sorry, I was a little late. I was measuring a job in Tinley Park, it was a fire job. I smell like a burnt stick. I'm going to go to the shop.
Are there any other orders of business? The meeting then is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. There are ways to see, or sometimes to get... There's sometimes they get controversial.